If you are able and willing, we would ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to ask everyone to remain standing for a moment of silence for former school committee member Gordon Graham, who passed away this week, this past week. Thank you. This is the January 25th meeting of the Clinton Public Schools School Committee. This meeting is being held both in person and remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Section 20. This remote meeting is via Google Meet technology.
Hold on one second, Joel.
We're not cutting through this.
It's good now? Oh, Scott, can you mute the speaker on that?
It is, it's mic.
Oh, it was in there, okay.
Are we all set?
You good now?
All right. So before we get started, I do want to mention, I want to address a couple of concerns about the audio from our meeting on January 11th. We are aware that the sound was cutting out. We believe the issue was caused by our wireless internet. Tonight, we are running through a hardwired connection, so hopefully everyone joining us remotely will be able to hear us better tonight. And I'll address public comment when we get to that. Can we start with a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Just let them know I didn't sign those. It wasn't, it was just because I was unavailable. I have no objection to them.
Mr. Bailey said he did not sign the bills, but it's not because he has any objection. He says it's not been available to sign.
No, that's fine, that's fine. I think we had the signatures that we needed, so. I should mention that Mr. Bailey is joining us remotely tonight. So a motion having been made and seconded, any further discussion on the bills? All those in favor?
Aye.
Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from January 11th?
So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the minutes? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous again, thank you. So before we get into our public comment, we want to make sure we have the opportunity for public comment, and we certainly appreciate the comments. Public comment is one agenda item that we have as part of our public business meeting. Once we move on from that agenda item, public comment is over, and it's a function of our meeting as a functioning business meeting. Tonight, we'll be turning off the chat feature of the meeting following the public comment agenda item, so I just want to make sure everyone's clear on that. That said, we appreciate and look forward to any comments that people might have. Dr. Meyer, do you have any public comment?
So I do have two public comments that were shared with me earlier today, and it was requested to be shared at the meeting. The first is a statement from CTA President Robin Quist. And it just says that the CTA has surveyed our members. 113 teachers voted to support the Board of Health recommendation not to bring more students back into the building until the positivity rate drops below 10%. Two more teachers thought that the percentage should be even lower. And then I also received communication from the steward of the Instructional Assistance Union. They did their own survey as well. She asked me to share the responses to the first question. The first question said, "Do you support the Board of Health's recommendation not to bring any more students back into the building until the positivity rate drops below 10%?" There were 39 responses, and 92.3% of them said yes, they support that recommendation. So those were the two that were shared with me by the respective union leadership.
Thank you.
I don't see any right now in the public comment. Or in the chat, I guess I should say.
Okay, all right. Well, and you know, the first two may have addressed any comments that might have been out there as well, so this time, unless there are objections, we'll move on from public comment. Okay, thank you.
All right, so going into the learning model update, as we normally start, start with kind of our COVID-19 data. I think that was a welcome sign, was the data released on the 21st was the first time we showed a decrease in our percent positivity in a while, also a decrease in our average daily incident rate from the week before. So we dropped from just about 15%, 14.97, down to 13.2. So we're about at 1.77, I guess is what it would be, less. There's a little summary of the last few weeks right on the first page in your packet. There's the actual charts from the state release a few pages later. And I also have, I guess it's the fourth page in your packet or fifth page in your packet, there's the two graphs with our data. So I added the second graph. The top graph is the graph we've been looking at all along with the average daily incidence rate, and that's the one that, you know, kind of goes up and has that spike down. The bottom one, the one that looks more like a bar graph, that's the percent positivity, since I figured that's one of the ones that we are using right now as a key metric, we can isolate that one for more graphical interpretation there. So obviously, we're hoping that that downward trend continues. I'd say based on the cases coming in this week, it's been another pretty good week, so we're hoping that the numbers released on Thursday will continue to show that trend. And remember, it's always a 14-day average, so last week, we had one good week of data, or one better week of data, but we still had one of the kind of bad weeks of data tacked onto it. If we can get, you know, two weeks, the sort of the lesser cases that we're seeing now, then that could help drop that percent positivity rate quite a bit. Just some updates on our public school data. Between January 3rd and January 22nd, we had 11 positive staff members and one positive student. I should note that the student numbers only include students who have been in school. So students who might have been remote and were positive are not counted in there. The state, we only report students, positive cases who have been in the building within the last seven days in their count. We did have one case of in-school transmission in a classroom between two staff members, and I will talk about the epidemiologist findings if you go a few pages after the state data. I put a little summary there. So on January 9th, we did have a staff member at CES reported that they were positive. Person had been previously identified as a close contact outside of school, had not been in the building since January 6th. Close contacts notified all over the weekend, and the classroom was switched to full remote learning. On January 19th, one of the close contacts reported a positive test. That close contact did have a negative test prior to that, then became symptomatic, and then received their test on the 18th. So there was suspected in-school transmission, since a close contact ended up testing positive, so we identified, we talked to the, we reported that to the state, who referred us to the Department of Public Health. The epidemiologist reviewed the case, responded to me on January 21st. Based on the dates, the epidemiologist believes that this was likely a case of in-school transmission between two staff members who were working in the same room, but the response for that finding is to transition the classroom to remote learning and to test the entire classroom. Because the classroom had already been switched to remote, that was the decision that we made as soon as the initial teacher had tested positive, that the epidemiologist said that the correct action was taken, and no further action was needed in terms of that. And then because the classroom had last been in contact with an infected individual on January 6th, by that point, it had already been 14 days since the exposure, so no further action was needed in terms of testing. So the only other thing they would have done is they would have tested everyone who was in that classroom to help make sure there wasn't, you know, any additional spread, but since it was 14 days, they said that the testing was not needed. So that was that. When you talk through the DPH, they have pretty clear guidelines based on the number of incidents in a room, the number of incidents in a grade, the number of incidents in the school. But I do think it's important to realize that the, you know, their numbers, they do have to trace back to kind of one common point, right? So it's not just general cases, they're looking at cases that are linked together for their different cutoffs. So our, I guess I should say too, since this was published, there was one other case that's suspected in-school transmission, once again, between two staff members at the high school that we have, I did call in and report today. I spoke to the staff members Friday afternoon, so I'm still, have not been able to get findings necessarily from the epidemiologists, but I'd say, given the circumstances of it, I don't think it would be any different recommendation than what we had for this one. And also today, we did find out of two additional positive staff members since the weekend. So since the 22nd, we found two additional staff members reported being positive today. Our current learning model is Remote Plus. We've been staying in that mode, bringing in just our high need students. The current learning model guidelines that we're working under, the ones approved by the school committee on January 11th, also approved by the Board of Health on January 14th, and also sort of as we heard in public comment, sort of endorsed by the, both of our major unions, were to allow the current Remote Plus model to continue, consistent with state guidance, do not bring in additional students, remove to Hybrid Plus until the percent positivity drops below 10%, recommending a phase-in of grades based on how far we are below 10, and allowing winter sports proceed with those clarifications. So that's pretty much the guidance we're following right now. Vaccination update. The K-12 educators are part of Phase 2. I know they made an announcement today about Phase 2 starting February 1st. I know they did sort of bump, I think it was ages 65 and over with two comorbidities ahead of the educators, but I don't know exactly how that's going to roll out. We don't know if sort of how they're going to distribute to the age 75 and over and age 65 and over with comorbidities, if that's going to be something through like pharmacies, whereas teachers might be more of a general clinic. As of now, 29 staff members have already received one dose of the vaccination. That was through some that were able to get it done the day that they were doing, the first responders up here. It was also, there's also other staff members who have, whether it's through their outside jobs or their spouse's work, nature of their work, have been able to also receive vaccinations. Our survey data, we did a new survey, and 87% of the remaining staff still said that they intend to receive the vaccination when it's offered to them.
That's great.
Pooled testing is the next one. So this is, what pooled testing is, is it's when you test a group of people, so usually somewhere between 10 and 25 people. You put all of the samples collected into kind of one batch, and then you do a test on that one batch, and then that way, if that entire batch comes out negative, then you know everyone in the batch should be negative. And then all you have to do is you have to look at which of those batches of samples have a positive case in them, and then you have to go back and then drill down and do a second round of testing on any of those batches that have a positive, so you can identify who the positive one in the group was. So it's a more, kind of a more efficient way of doing testing. The state is funding a pooled testing initiative. It could start as early as February 8th for districts that are, have all the infrastructure in place. One of the things that you need to have in place is the follow-up testing, which is the, they're recommending BYNEX NOW, which is the testing program that some of the other districts were able to pilot earlier this year. I think 160 districts were able to do that. Clinton was not one of them. I think a more realistic target for us would be to try to get involved in this after following February vacation, right? The week of February 8th is right before the vacation week, and then I think that having those extra two weeks hopefully will allow us to get the infrastructure together. There was a webinar on this on Friday where they tried to walk through sort of what the process looks like. You have to sort of do statement of assurances and kind of an application. A lot of it through March 28th, basically through the end of March, the state will pay for this testing, and then if the school district decides, if any school district that decides to continue with the testing, at that point, it would be at a cost to the district. However, they are expecting that we should be getting an allocation of SRR2 funds, what they're calling it. It's similar to the SRR funds we got over the summer for COVID-related expenses. There's another round of that grant that was part of the package passed in December, and one of the things they're suggesting is that districts who wish to continue with the testing program should allocate funds to that program. The approximate cost of a test is $5. They're recommending weekly tests, so that's about, for us, it'd be about $11,000 a week if we were going to do testing for everybody in the whole district. If it was hybrid and we were only testing maybe half the people, that could cut that down. And then that's not counting the follow-up testing, and that's not counting any of the additional staffing or anything that might be necessary to coordinate the testing, so. But we'll see, we do have, you know, I think, I think right now, the fact that the state is providing it for free, I think it's definitely something that I would recommend that we pursue. We try to see how it goes. I think as a state, if everyone, I think most districts are going to try to participate in this, I think it'll allow us to gather a lot of data on a statewide level, and I think by the time, you know, the end of March comes, I think we'll be able to see, you know, where do we stand at that point with vaccinations, where do we stand at that point with the percent positivity or the average daily incidence rates in the, you know, in our community or in the state, and whether or not we found the program to be useful in deterring the spread in the schools, or whether or not we would decide to continue with it at that point. Essentially, what the state did was they did all the procurement, so they went out and they worked with vendors to get vendors to sign on, so that there are three vendors right now, there might be more that they add, but right now, they have three vendors that if you say you want to be part of the program, they're going to try to sort of regionally assign districts to particular vendors unless you have a major preference, like if you already have a working relationship or something with one of them, and that way, because some of the things, some of the logistics of it are any samples you take have to be transported to the lab, you know, through a courier or a van or something like that. So the thought is, most of these places are located in Boston, so the further away from Boston you are, you know, if it's regional, you might be able to pool resources to try to get your courier service in there. So the testing would be done once a week, that's the recommendation. What they're saying is that for any school, you don't have to participate at every school, but every school that you're participating, they say they want you to include all school staff, make that opportunity available to all school staff, including bus drivers, cafeteria workers, custodians, everyone, everyone in the school, make that testing available to them if you're doing this school. So I think, you know, there's two more webinars this week, there's another one tomorrow, and then there's another one on Friday, I believe, and, you know, we have a meeting, I scheduled a meeting for tomorrow with our administrators and our nursing staff and our technology director, really to start trying to look at some of the logistics of this in terms of what we think our needs would be, what this could look like here, what do we think we might require for staffing, and where we are in our readiness for getting the follow-up testing and those types of things. So that's pretty much where we are with the testing. And then the last thing I have for our update is sort of our proposed plan moving forward. Our proposed plan moving forward, there's a sheet in here that just says, "Plan moving forward once the 10% threshold has been met." Literally, I haven't changed this since last week, or last meeting. So this is the same plan we had last meeting, we proposed last meeting. It outlines the phase-in priorities, but I think it should be, it should note that, you know, the whole concept of phasing grades back in is also based on the, kind of based on how far we are below 10%. So it's more likely that we're going to bring more grades in the lower we are below 10%. So for example, if we had a couple good weeks in a row and then another bonus one in, you know, over February vacation, and now our positivity rate was very low, we could be potentially going to like a full hybrid or close to full hybrid model after February vacation. I think that's all I really have, is an update for the learning model. I don't know if there's any action that needs to be taken at this time unless that's the pleasure of the board, so.
So you're not seeking a motion for us to move forward if we get accepted into the pool testing plan? That's, first of all, I don't think it's our purview, but...
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it requires a motion from the school committee to go into that. I think that's something we can just authorize. Certainly, I want to inform you of it. That's my recommendation. If you have any concerns, I'd be glad to talk to them. I guess the other thing to really make sure people at home know, if you're listening, is that the program does require consent, right? So if you're someone that says, "I do not want my child tested," well, your child wouldn't be tested, because it does require consent, same with staff members. So I just think, I know that's a major question that some people may have, so I just figured I would outline that.
Thank you.
Let's see. Okay, so I got the other one down there. All right. I think that's all I have for a learning model update, unless there's any questions or comments from the board. Okay. So move along to my report here. Oh, I guess one thing I would highlight in your packet, I did include a letter from the Mass Association of School Superintendents that was written to Governor Baker, and essentially what they're asking for is basically just more timelines on when teachers are going to get vaccinated, and also looking for updated guidance on, you know, going back and reviewing some of these, some of the guidance. For example, you know, one that keeps coming up is things like transportation, right? So the transportation guidance in the summer was very restrictive, and it's just trying to get it on the radar that maybe that now might not be the time to change that guidance, but are they starting to review that document so that they can at least let us know when might be the time? Because if we do see numbers continue to drop and we get to a point, you know, in April or something like that, when we're starting to talk about bringing all the students back at one time, certainly that becomes a major hurdle. So I think that's sort of what they're trying to basically convey to the governor, is that if, you know, if that's, if the goal is to get all students back in schools, then we're probably going to need to revisit some of that guidance, and if we can't change some of that guidance, that might delay the ability for schools to actually get everyone, everyone back in. All right. Under the superintendent's report, the first thing I have is a resignation. We received a resignation letter from Patricia Fox. She's an instructional assistant at Clinton Elementary School. She informed us that she has accepted a job offer at a hospital. She's trying to grow her career, so her last day was last Friday, and so we wish her well. The next agenda item is just an update on the CHS Program of Studies. So there are a few courses that the high school is looking to add. There's not, there doesn't seem to be a lot of changes this year. I think the goal is to try to actually have a normal year to implement the changes that we made last year for next year, but I'll let Mr. Sarmak describe the new courses.
In your packet, you received a sheet that has the course list. There were three courses. Advanced Placement Psychology, 18 Advanced Placement Computer Science Festival, and on the back, one more, Altitude Concepts. First two are AP courses, and we're trying to increase the amount of advanced coursework at the high school, so students can take, they have more options to take against social work. In the social studies department, we have AP Psychology, we already have CP Psychology. It's been a very successful course, adding this gives another option for students to further pursue psychology. AP Computer Science Festival, that's part of the logic of Eglad. This year, we have Computer Science Essentials, which is a course. This is the next step, involves more programming, a series of three. The third one, obviously, next year, we get there, we have an AP course, and then all types of programming. But just gives the students more options that have the choice to do. On the back, the AP health concepts, that's the first math class. It's a math concept, that course. It's a course that gives just the concepts of one unit of test pass tests. It gets through the one concept, the jump concept, and then the other. Do you have any questions about these three courses?
And I believe in your packet and electronically, you should have received a copy of the full program studies.
Any questions? Thank you. Thank you. Please thank the departments for bringing this coursework forward. I know that we, in our strategic plan, there's elements of continuing to build advanced coursework for students, and it's nice to see these being rolled out. Keep up the good work.
One last thing I wanted to add, but I've been at the fore, is that we got to work with Mass Insight, this is our second year of three-year plan, and we are trying to compete with our own AP courses for advanced courses, because that's taught us to just more of that.
I think that's an important note, is the fact that we're not only adding these advanced placement courses, but a lot of those teachers will be able to get some support through that connection with Mass Insight, so. All right.
Thanks, Scott.
All right, so the next part would be financial updates. We do have a mid-year budget update in your packet. There's a report from Mr. Fratto, our business manager. So essentially, as of right now, we've spent about 35% of our budget, we've spent about, our budget of 24.524279, so about 24 and a half million. We've spent about eight and a half so far, 35%. We have about 59% of our budget, or 15.99 million, encumbered. So the encumbrances, basically, that's when we look at our current bills, our current payroll, and we kind of extrapolate that out and basically say if we were, you know, if we pay everyone their full salary, if we pay our bus company the full contract, based on what we've been paying, how much will that take for the rest of the year? And that leaves us a budget balance, an unencumbered budget balance of 1.44, $1,449,364. Basically, 6% of our budget at this point is not already completely spoken for. Now, there are some key things in there, some things like substitutes and sickly buyback and some stipend positions and things like that, like coaching stipends, those types of things that have not been encumbered, so they're, because they're not really, normally, we could encumber the coaching salaries a lot, but this year, we have not because... coaching salaries a lot, but this year we have not because of the uncertainty necessarily of which sports will run and which won't. And typically, we don't encumber the substitute lines, although we do have quite a bit drawing off the substitute lines right now because of some of the long-term subpositions that we, that we have, that we needed because of, because of COVID. We can go through the line by line in a minute. Managing unemployment claims. So unemployment fraud has been rampant this year. There was, you know, starting over the summer, we started seeing lots of unemployment claims. I think, I think I've applied twice so far. Not really, but my name's come up twice in the report.
We should point out, though, that, that this isn't our people that are filing these claims. This is...
Correct. This is fraud. This is, these are like scams, right? These are people who are basically trying to like steal an identity and, and, and file a unemployment claim on your behalf. And it's happening all over the state. So, but what's great is Mr. Frato's been all over it and working with the town. And actually, we were able to get a lot of claims refunded by challenging some of the fraudulent unemployment claims. So we got about $35,000 actually refunded to our unemployment account, which was good. So to stay on top of that, which has been a huge, huge help. And then the CVRF, which was the COVID Relief Fund, and the RLTE, which was the Remote Learning Technology Grants, pretty much expended those. Our goal is to send those, expend them by the 1230, 2020 deadline, although that deadline did get extended out. It didn't get extended out until the, like the 27th, I think, or something like that. So we had planned to make sure we used all that money. You can see some of the breakdown. A lot of it was in contractual services, looking at things for remote learning. A lot of that was software, learning apps, and using consultants to update IEPs. So a lot of the stuff we were doing, we were doing like testing on the weekends and things like that to try to get caught up on some of our special ed services, and our transportation capacity, the extra additional runs ate into a lot of that. Some supplies and materials. We have some things for PPE. And then the increasing capacity for vulnerable populations. That's basically, a lot of that is, some of that is the food service and things we need to do for the grab and go to offset some of their costs with some of the paper goods and those types of things that they've needed to use. For the remote learning technology funding, we were able to purchase 250 Chromebooks, $58,000, and 84 Mighty Year Kits. The Mighty Year Kits are, they're kind of like their own little tablet system used for, mostly for like ABA support. And it was stuff that students could actually, we could issue them so that if students needed to be in a remote setting, they had some resources they could try to use at home. And that's all we have for this month for the grant update. We're still trying to close out some of the grants from last year because there was a lot of carryover leeway that they gave us. So we'll continue to get more of an updated grant report as we continue to work on, work on that. The next few pages are really just kind of the line-by-line budget breakdown. So you can see where, you know, where things, what lines might be over or under. At this point, you know, I don't think there's anything that we're, it's a weird-looking budget because we had to make a lot of changes, right? So there were things that, you know, how we, how we planned for this year was not really what we ended up needing. So there are some lines that are off. But usually, for every line that might be over, we know where there's a line that's probably under. So I think right now, we're trending well to hopefully be able to finish this year on target. Are there any other questions on the budget update?
Steve, I don't, I don't have any questions, but I would like to say that, you know, at a time where so many school districts with uncertainty around us could be fearful to try to put a plan forth, we've seen an opportunity in front of us where not only have we dealt with the business at hand, we've looked toward where some of the uniqueness around COVID funding and funding for grants, an opportunity to use resources that fit into the COVID plan, but also fitted into our long-term plans for where we wanted the district to go. Seeing you dovetail those two things together, and then also keeping an eye on things like making sure we don't have a funding cliff a year from now by working with the town and moving circuit breaker funds, and just trying to understand that there's a macro vision to what's happening with lots of numbers, but not losing pace every day with how we're managing the school district is commendable, in my opinion. So, great job. Glad to see we're in a good position and, and working together and, and keeping us where we are.
Well, I think, you know, I'd, I'd say that I do the best I can to try to juggle all that stuff, but I do have to thank, I think Annette Cologne does a wonderful job of, you know, she handles all our warrants, and she's got everything in the system. So it's, it's, you can only make decisions and do things if you have accurate sort of data to do it from. She does a nice job getting us reports. You know, same thing Marilyn and payroll, and, and then Glenn, obviously, is the business manager. So I think that those, you know, obviously, those three deserve a lot of credit for anything we're doing financially.
Kudos to those three as well. Thank you.
The preliminary, the next meeting, February 8th, we're hoping to have a preliminary FY22 budget for you. It will be, it'll be just like we normally do, where it's kind of a preliminary one. It's, it'll be far from our final one. But I've met individually, we've had staff had an opportunity to submit their requests. Principals have reviewed those requests, requests. I've met individually with each principal so that we could go through those requests and the staffing needs and those types of things as we begin to compile all that stuff for next year. And then, and then, you know, to your point, Matt, eventually we'll have to start, Mr. Verakis, we'll have to start, you know, looking at how do we get that number down to the number that's going to match sort of the, the funding we can expect from the state, and, and what other opportunities there might be to try to preserve some of the steps forward we want to make by looking at any possible COVID grants or other grants that might come our way. So, so you can look forward to that. That's your teaser for next meeting, FY22 preliminary budget. Facilities update on the fourth coming up. So between now and our next meeting, we do have a meeting with the school building authority regarding Clinton Middle School. This is just another, sort of one of their due diligence steps as they look forward, as they, they try to figure out how they're moving forward with the, through the pandemic. Normally, on a regular year, schools would have been invited into the MSBA program around the end of November, maybe early December. And here we are at the, you know, beginning of February. So they're a little bit behind. But, you know, we're still, we had a meeting earlier with them this year, and now we have this, this follow-up meeting. So I think it's a, it's a good sign that we've kind of moved forward in their process a little bit, and then we'll get to see if we, if we continue or not. The town surplus property committee has been meeting, and I know, Mr. Bailey, I don't know if that's something you want to speak to, or you want me to try to relay that?
Yeah, Steve, yeah, if you could, I think it's something that, you know, I know we talked about it briefly, you know, maybe yourself and Joel, or I could just send an email to everyone. I think maybe not for our next meeting, but the one after that, maybe we need to kind of decide what we want to do with those two buildings. And if you want to talk more about it so everyone can hear.
Okay. So the two buildings that the, that he referenced that have, that have come up in this town building committee meeting is essentially the, the fire station, which I think we know, trying to look at what is, what's the long-term goal for the fire station. But also looking at the central office building in terms of what's the long-term plan for the central office building. You know, we do house some, some great programs there. The, the adult learning center is up there. The early childhood programs are there. But there is a lot of space that's not used on a daily basis. So I think just sort of, the idea is to just kind of look at that from just a big picture standpoint of, you know, if that, if that boiler broke tomorrow, or that roof needed replaced tomorrow, and we needed to make, you know, a $2 million investment in that building, is that really what we want to do, right? Or, or there are any other options? So I think that's the, you know, that's just the, the plan, is just kind of get that on the radar. And, and it might, you know, the answer to that might be yes. I mean, that's fine. But it's just, I think that's part of what they just want to examine as they're looking at, at all the various town properties and just kind of looking at, at bringing that one into the fold as Facility director search, you know, I think we had some additional, we did some additional screening interviews this week, I believe, that were completed. I think we're, we're very close to moving forward with finalists at this point. I would hope that this process would be wrapped up within, hopefully by our next meeting. We would have, have a candidate. I think we're getting close. But that's, I think that's about what I have for an update. I don't know if there's anything...
No, I think that's about it. I think just to, just as a call-out, just, you know, having Alexis Texera on board and her helping to run the process, having been through the, the middle school principal search, it really just, it elevates the opportunity, right? It elevates the, the support we have, the resources. So, you know, great job by folks getting her on board because I think it makes a whole lot of difference with the, the different openings that we're trying to work with, right? And, and in a short amount of time. She's doing great. So it's, it's going well.
Yeah, and I would, I would second that. I'd say, having been through, you know, a lot of hiring processes, her, some of the, the behind-the-scenes stuff she's been able to do with helping to basically almost do a preliminary phone screening with candidates just to make sure that before they come in for an interview, that everyone's on the same page, has really, really helped, I think, make the process more efficient and, and hopefully more, more thorough. So I think it's been, it's been a great opportunity. My last update here is just the influenza vaccine update. I know it came up at the last meeting, and it's gone. So there is no more influenza vaccine update. I believe the official notification said that they determined it has not been a bad flu season. I believe there's probably some other factors that also led to this as well, but the requirement for all students to get the influenza vaccine is, is now lifted. I believe they're still recommending it, and it's not, you know, and we're certainly not saying, "Don't get a flu shot for your student if you were planning on one." I mean, that's fine, but it's no longer required like it was. And I believe that wraps up my report.
Thank you. I, I do think it's, I, I would love to at some point see the data with all of the precautions and safety procedures that are in place across the Commonwealth and the nation, whether or not that actually has an impact on the, the, it being a mild flu season. But do we have any updates from any of the advisory committees? We'll just take them in bulk?
I don't believe so.
Okay. And we're going to go into executive session to, for an update on negotiations, I believe. Is that correct? Okay. Anything under old business? Anything under new business?
I'll share, can I just share one piece of news here that came in a little bit later? So Chris DeHan, our new director of technology, he reached out to T-Mobile for something they had called a Project 10 Million grant. And we were awarded or selected to participate in their Project 10 Million grant program. So we were approved for an additional 265 hotspots.
Oh, wow.
That'll come free with 100 gigabytes of data each year for the next five years at no cost to Clinton.
Wow.
There is, you know, we could buy additional data if needed at a, at a lesser rate. And then, you know, that's, that's the main benefit is it's the hotspots. It's part of their Project 10 Million to try to get, get people connected. So we were able to, he was able to reach out and get that. And I believe there might be some additional discounts on some hardware that we can get through T-Mobile that's associated with this, too. I can get more, I can get more information at some point from Chris by the next technology update, but this email came in, so I wouldn't share that.
Great news.
Yep. Awesome.
Anything else in a new business? Okay. Under Chapter 30A, Section 21 of Massachusetts General Law, the open meeting law, the committee will enter into executive session to discuss contract negotiations with the Clinton Teachers Association. The committee will not reconvene. This, I'll ask for a roll call vote here. Joel Bates, aye.
Tina Zapantus, aye.
Matt Verakis, aye.
Brendan Bailey, aye.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. I hope the sound was better tonight.